Okay. City's Committee is now meeting. It's Monday, April 17th at 6:21 PM. We have county members, president, myself, Councilwoman Manona, and Councilman Oliver on Zoom. There it is. Okay. Item one, project number 143 SC 180111. We have vote to authorize project approval to same down construction incorporated of North Haven, Connecticut, CPI home improvement prepared in Connecticut. In the amount of $27,300 for leg pain mitigation. Final signing in within 31 Little Street pending city council approval. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Manona, second by Councilman Oliver. Discussion.
I mean, it makes me a little uncomfortable just being close to.
Well, do we already approve this project?
All of it, though?
No, they did, and they finally came back and said what we approved was more than the value. It's high debt, so they they cut it back.
Okay.
So they're now getting Westline. But I guess, so something gave them, I'm not sure what, but. Well, the lip paint's still in there. Lip paint roofing siding with one company, yeah, moving inside. It's been reduced to, but they had to. So. Actually, it's Westline. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item two, business by members, vote to consider business by members.
Second.
Oh, Councilman, Councilman, second by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any other business?
None that I'm aware.
Me neither. All right. Okay, that in mind, it's going to be the three adjournment. Motion by Councilman.
Still moved.
Second by Councilman Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's 6:30, somebody looking call this evening's line and what meeting is to order. For the record, today is Monday, April 17th. Council members attending in person in the auditorium this evening are Councilwoman Warren, Councilwoman Manona, Councilwoman Minicia, and Councilwoman Verrett. And participating in the Zoom, Councilman Oliver. And I'll see if Councilman Kevin Arrow is on. Is that a given? Okay. So we have our forum before we begin, the meeting will be standard. Okay, first on the agenda, or first in the lineup, is a public hearing. For the purposes of soliciting citizenry regarding the proposed changes to chapter 128 solid waste. Before we open the public hearing, could we kindly have the public hearers ready for the hearing? Notice is hereby given that the board of councilmen of the city of Torrington will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 17th, 2023, starting at 6:30 PM in the city auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit public comment regarding proposed changes to the city's code of ordinances, chapter 428 solid waste. The full text of the proposed changes is available to the public online or in the office of the city. The public may attend in person or by Zoom. In-person attendees will be granted up to three minutes to comment. First world attendees may submit their comments in writing to the city clerk before 4:00 PM on Monday, April 17th, 2023. Written comments may be sent by email to city underscore underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to 140 Main Street, Torrington. Written comments will be forwarded to the board of councilmen in advance of the public hearing. All interested persons are invited to attend the M V R dated at Torrington, Connecticut. This is the last day of April 1, 2023. All right. I'll open this public hearing to the public for comment. But before going to the residents, president of the auditorium, were there any comments submitted by email? No, okay, all right. So open to the public, a jury from the public that wishes to address the council regarding the changes to chapter 128 solid waste. Please approach and. State your names on the record.
Good evening, Sharon Wagner, 178 Circle Drive. I wanted to approach this and ask you to table. The city council agenda for this evening indicates that following this public hearing, the council will vote to potentially approve the new ordinance regarding waste disposal and recycling. I have serious concerns that this hearing tonight is inadequate. If passed, this proposed ordinance is not likely to accomplish your goals easily, and I'm here to ask you to table this item. I do want to acknowledge the ordinance committee and review a group of dedicated city officials who have a most difficult task. This ordinance in particular has been revised at least five or six times in the last year before presentation. And your proposed changes are constantly announced at the state level. For example, a recent article about removing styrofoam containers. Some of the changes in the ordinance are pending legislative action, which adds more confusion to members of the public who may be reading this proposed ordinance revision. I have two major concerns. The first and more important is that we have become a city where we announce public hearings minimally, and then when no one shows up or few express interest, the changes are made. We are not providing adequate time and information to the taxpayers, who would have opportunities to ask questions and express concerns. We are assuming that no one objects. And this was proven some years ago with the proposal to remove many streetlights, when we didn't provide adequate time for taxpayers to review maps. It is the city's job to make sure that access to proposals is provided more completely to reach young people as well as elderly who lack access to technology or find it difficult to navigate the city website. We all know that there are people who always resist change, but we forget that there are many who are willing to help control costs while also interested in improving waste and recycling for teachers. Some are already doing best practices at home. For others, it may not be easy to find the information. They may be technology challenged and even incapable of sometimes finding the city website a little confusing. My second concern is that we need to do more than pass an ordinance and then expect everyone to comply. We need social media as well as newspapers for those who still subscribe. Information should be sent to the senior center and the library and schools for newsletters. We should be conducting several meetings to discuss the issue. Instead, we forget that taxpayers bear the burden of the cost and agree control is needed, but we sometimes act like parents with calcific children. There are many ways that we can reach members of our community to make change. We even have a recycling committee that has been left out of the discussion while we have been developing ideas and goals which can reach our residents, including a new newsletter for the city website. We need to include our schools with programs for children and modeling with practices. We need to include our organizations and businesses with innovative ways to promote good habits. It will take our entire village to make this happen. We see it happening in other communities. An ordinance approved tonight will soon need revision. It is 19 pages of difficult reading, and it's not the answer. In addition, when we revise ordinances, they should include a page of bulleted, easily understood changes. It should also be in English and Spanish. We have an awesome city with amazing residents, giving them an opportunity to be a part of their new project, special events, recycling fairs, recycled art projects, a poster contest, and we're to fire prevention week, and more. We'll see more families becoming involved, and our efforts will have better success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Still open for public for comment?
Tom Canver, PT 21, Mr. Earl. I appreciate all the effort that's going into into making all the extensive revisions, but I have some more specific suggestions before I get into those. I very much in agreement with Sharon's comments about a general procedure about handling public hearings, but my my comments tonight are are some specific points on on the on the ordinance that has written. The the first point, the directives for retailers on a shopping car, shopping carts appears more burdensome than warranted. I hope there would be for this discussion with business owners to yield a more mutually beneficial policy. Now, my my second point. Where the city really needs to crack down decisively is on the donation bins. I'll ask Heather to pass along some, the totals are going around. You can see that's just what's happened this year, you know, it's it's been going on for, you know, I've seen it happen this year, I mean, last year. They they become dumping grounds, the whole area around these donation bins. It's a, it's a, it's worthwhile to have those bins. So you collect mostly textiles, and that's taking out of the out of the waste stream in this list that goes to the landfill where I have to pay the tip and fee or any of that stuff. But it needs, it needs some information. I'm going to be handing review some information that I dug up that might be helpful in crafting some some language there. When I was looking into that, I checked the state statute. And there's only a, there's a very low bar between what constitutes littering and what constitutes dumping. Now, take, take a, it only requires one cubic foot of littered being discarded at one time to qualify for dumping. And once you get into dumping, the the charge and the penalties that could be assessed are much higher. So, so I would, I would like to suggest to, I mean, I I agree that you have some information about dumping and penalties in the in the ordinance already, but maybe you can strengthen that language a little bit. That may may help. Now, lastly, the one big issue that I see in this proposal is the charging fees, the collection disposal of refuse. That's what we were calling sanitation service fee. The, I'm speaking as the basic proponent of the of that strategy. It's it's been proven to work, you know, but it's it's going to take some effort to convince folks to participate in it. And this 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 program is such a radical departure from what we're doing now. We need to have some in-depth discussions on how this program is actually going to be implemented. And then and it might, it might be best handled through multiple informational meetings. The 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 this this type of program will only work if if the the consumer, the generator of the trash realizes that they're in control of how much they generate. And then and then and then therefore they can affect the the cost that they're going to be paying. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canver. Still open for comment on chapter 128 solid waste. Because this is a public hearing, I'll do this three times. Second call for comments from the public regarding this revision of the ordinance. And the third call for public comment regarding chapter 128 solid waste. Saying and hearing no additional public comments, I will close the public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Public hearing is closed. All right, we can move into the regular agenda. Just for the record, Councilman Kevin Arrow did come in, and he was able to hear all of the comments during the public hearing. And he's present for the regular portion of the meeting. Item number one. So item number one, do I have a motion to adopt the proposed changes to chapter 128 of the code of ordinances solid waste?
There is chairman of the ordinance committee. It is, we have gotten not only comments here, but some other comments regarding this. We've been meeting since, I think, last August, I reflect that in our minutes, with many iterations of this particular ordinance. So I guess before I make a comment, I'll move to table.
Okay, item motion to table, second.
Done.
And second by Councilman Minicia. And because this is a motion to table, no comments, there are no comment. I'll call the motion all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Maybe at the end of the meeting, Councilwoman.
No word.
Okay. All right, item two, I'll undertake a motion to open meeting to the public in accordance with section four subsection E of the city council and W P C A meeting rules of procedure. Thank you, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. And second by Councilwoman Manona, all in favor? Any opposed? We're open to the public, and this is for regular agenda or regular comment? Same now. We'll move to item three. I'll undertake a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from April 3rd, 2023. So, Councilwoman Manona, second by Councilwoman Warren. Questions and motion? Clearing now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any statements? And for, I'll undertake a motion to organize a mayor to sign the SC 2014301 amendment to the community development black grant program granted.
So.
Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Warren, and I heard stereo Councilman Kevin Arrow. Are there questions on this question? Clearing now, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
I'll undertake a motion on recommendation of the vehicle replacement advisory board to approve the vehicle replacement budget for fiscal year 23, 24. Emile is here, he does tremendous amount of work pulling this plan together.
So I'll move motion.
I I think there's a modification in this motion, though, is that correct? Do you know?
Sure.
Okay, so, so I've got a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Thank you. So motion made by Councilwoman Verrett.
Second.
Who's on that vehicle advisory board? Signed by Councilwoman Manona. Emile, do you want to just talk about what that one change is?
Yes, the one change is for the rescue pumper. The first proposal was that we were going to take the money for a 23, 24 with a letter of intent to purchase. They came back to us later and said the pumper was going to come in six months ahead of time and offered us a two-year split. Put 330,000 into coming out of 23, 24, with the remaining coming out of 24, 25 at a 5.9% interest rate, which would make us $20,000 overall. Would be still would have been coming in on the budget. DC Trip calling after we modified that plan again and said that the vehicle would put up for another 15 years in the back to the original proposal, which is a letter of intent with the total amount coming out of 23, 24 with no interest for 660,000. So all we have to do is go get Greenwood as a proposal of intent this year, after the next two weeks.
I suggest that, just to summarize and clarify, so the the plan that was sent out to the council members. The modification is that instead of having $330,000 budgeted in the 23, 24 fiscal year, and then 350,000 in the 24, 25, that all of the funds would be budgeted, all 660,000 would be budgeted in the 24, 25 year.
Yeah. Sounds a little bit unamiable.
So, so Councilwoman Verrett has agreed to modify the motion to accept the recommendation for that one modification of Councilwoman Manona. Would you permit your second?
Yes.
All right. Other questions or comments on the program?
Serving the vehicle replacement committee, I'm grateful for all the work, you know, that you have with this plan and plan, again, a few iterations of budget. And the committee was in consensus, not much moves of improvements. Or it's been a council.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Further questions or comments? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Thank you. Item six, speaking of the rescue pumper, item six, I will undertake a motion to utilize source well supplier contract number 113021, R B G 1, for the purchase of the E1 rescue pumper for the 22nd fire department in the amount of $660,000 from Greenwood Emergency Vehicle LLC of North Attleboro, Mass, to be paid for the vehicle replacement fund as as modified to reflect the fiscal year 24, 25. Can I hear pending board of finance approval? This has already been approved by the Board of Public Safety, I am able to say 2023. Do I have that one? Maybe Councilwoman Verrett, your second, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. And I don't know, but I have Chief Warren and Deputy Chief Trip here. I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add about this letter of intent or the advantages of locking this down at this point in the schedule? Let's see, last two persons.
Yeah, this was a crazy process. This is something new with the fire service that we're seeing with the whole rural crash market. It's take two years to actually get a new fire truck when you first order it. So Greenwood was our last vendor for the truck we have at Northern Station. This kind of part of the time we're kind of looking ahead when we bought that truck was to go back to where he was and look at the same trucks. We have two E1s now that are in service from 2000, 2001, which are soon to be retired, and they're still actually active and effective today, thanks to the gas effort from vehicle replacement and vehicle maintenance, keeping our trucks alive. But so what's happening here is that Greenwood's is a vendor. If you think of Ford, if you think of Torrington and Lishfield Ford, right, Ford is the manufacturer. Torrington and Lishfield are vendors. E1 is a Florida, they're a manufacturer, Greenwood's is a vendor. For this region, so Greenwood's is buying trucks ahead of time, knowing that is a two-year wait. They're basically flipping trucks. Before these, they have trucks everywhere, we have a demo, that's what our last one, the truck store, they go out and show the all departments, what miles on, this and that. This is a brand new truck coming out of manufacturing facility that Greenwood's has purchased. Where they of, I'd say handshake, I'll call it, basically like Torrington, it said we have first dibs. So part of the process is getting a letter of intent saying we are going to purchase this truck when it comes in. And there's two departments already waiting for us to say no, so they can jump on it. So this is kind of an aggressive thing that's happening out there now. So this is why we're front of the board and the councils now, because we want to buy the truck and not pay for it until it comes in, but we want to jump on it because that way of a process that we sense, it's it's an area that fire service has never seen before and had to deal with. We order a truck and get it, but I was just wondering if you want to speed or wait from start to finish.
And then we added the vehicle replacements, as you were meeting the discussion also, included what would cost escalation over the next 12 to 18 months?
It's 85,000 bucks.
Right. So, so while this motion is set is to authorize us to utilize source well supplier contract, it's really an authorization to issue a letter of intent so that we could get this vehicle under contract. No funds will be expected until July 1st.
July 1, 4, 5.
Just a question about this process. I mean, I I guess all all departments go through a third party like Greenwood. I mean, there's no way from directly to the manufacturer.
Correct. Correct.
And this is just the way it's always been done? Okay.
And, you know, there's different manufacturers and different vendors. So, you know, we have, like, with our engine two, well, the demos, the call demos for the general country say, is there our newsletter we had a truck? And they would sell it at a discounted price because it's down the road and it's been worked. So there's different vendors, there's stuff, and there's Rosa Bowers, which we have now, which we have had great luck with. E1 is another vendor. So there's different manufacturers and the vendors. There's a bunch of them in the Northeast, they just say in the Northeast that sell trucks. Different vendors, but Greenwood's is E1. In the Northeast.
Okay, it it just seems like if what I hear is that, you know, you almost have to buy these, you know, on a consignment. I mean, you're you're buying them at consignment here. Yeah. It just seems fundamentally different than what we've been doing in the past. Or typically, you made you made the analogy to car dealership, you know, you go into the showroom, right, you know, you spend the weekend, you look at five cars, you know, and boom, you drive out. This is like making, so you're ordering custom, right? We're ordering from the manufacturer in a sense, custom. I'm just wondering, right, there needs to be a moment in this.
It's just the way the fire, fire service is now. You don't go right to Ford and buy a Ford, you go to Torrington or this or some other Ford dealership, right? So.
Yeah, on the presumption that we have the cars that you want.
Right. But if you want Ford, you can't go to Ford and say.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah. I'm not, no, I'm not saying, I'm not criticizing it, I just understand it's what it's like. It's funny if other departments are having the same sort of problem.
There's, so there's, the process of buying a truck is a kind of a a voluntary department that has a hoop amount of money will custom to whatever they want. They will tell you what size tires, they'll tell you they want chrome rims, they will put diamond plate everywhere. They can customize the truck. Now, Torrington cannot afford that. I can tell you right off the bat, I'm not being in the city for twice every year, we can't afford that. So we go through a commercial type flat line off the off the road with modifications. So the modifications will be in a cabinet. If we ask, certain equipment, we want to put into this cabinet, they can measure it out, put it in shelving for us, they can change the cabinet for us. That's done agreements, not done at E1. One says, here's your truck, and it will be modified with the dealerships.
Okay, okay.
That's the customization that we do.
Okay.
This truck is strictly read out the lot for 660,000.
Okay. I get that. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I've learned a lot being of a vehicle replacement committee. I mean, everything from even the food trucks, you know, the seniors that are asked for. I think of wheelchair vehicles, you know, there's always that middleman that can meet specifications that are necessary. And.
Any questions for the council chair? Thank you. If there are no further questions, I'll call a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Every seven, I'll undertake a motion to neutralize the procurement process from N P P G O P, this is membership number M 5698164, contract number P S 20335, to purchase the Halmatrow bomb battery operated rescue tools for Torrington Fire Department in the amount of $157,325.70 from M E S. From M E S slash shipments of water for Connecticut, having been previously approved by the Board of Public Safety on April fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Uh, funding for this is ninety percent of the funds, uh, will be reimbursed by the FEMA, the FEMA grant, award, um, A F G grant. And then ten percent is from the fire plant catalog ones. Do I have that motion?
No, will it?
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett. And, uh, that's, uh, that's the, Councilwoman Caminaro. And, uh, questions? And again, this is, um, that A F G grant, two years ago that was applied for.
By law.
Yes, so this is fulfilling the, um, obligations of that grant as it was presented. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
All right.
Any votes? Motion, please. All right, item eight. I'll attempt, I'll entertain a motion to adopt a resolution number one-four-three-dash-two-four-zero for a one-point four million dollar Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant for the implementation of a mixed-use revitalization project at the Sophia Building. More commonly known as eleven Main Street, probably more commonly known as the subway building on Main Street, right by the bridge. Do I have that motion?
Come on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingea. And a second?
Certainly.
Second, Councilwoman Rowett. Just trying to think of what other stores were happening here.
Which one, this was? This is right around the street.
It's, yeah, so it's right on, it's right on the bridge. It's on the west side of Main Street, um, it's, uh, the building between the bridge and towers.
Okay, yeah. Is that still the Jampin's building?
No.
It's still, it's still.
Yes.
Uh, so the ice cream shops down the middle way?
Yes, rolling ice cream, uh, express employment, I think there's a server, server. Service.
Service.
Um, and I think there's, uh, restaurants, bakery going in there. Um, and just a little background on this also, um. Uh, in prior administration, uh, there was a grant application that was submitted to, um, Connecticut Main Street. It was called the Come Home to Downtown Grant. Uh, it was a grant that was designed to look at, uh, former commercial buildings on Main Streets or, or downtown areas. And how to create, uh, this multi-use, mixed-use, commercial and residential. Uh, this building was awarded that grant, um, there was a significant amount of work that was done, um.
When was this?
I don't know, this was in tw- twenty-twelve.
Oh, I know.
At least ten years ago, yes, yeah. So, um, that grant did identify, um, that this was a great building to do that mixed use, um. And unfortunately, it didn't, uh, nothing has happened in the last ten years, um, as you identified, um, Mr. Tanguy, the owner owns the building. The new property owner who is here this evening, who has a proven record of, um, uh, revitalizing and, um, and renovating former commercial spaces. Um, is prepared to do the same thing with this building.
What?
That's Mr.
What other buildings does he own?
The former Libby, which is now the Clayton.
Okay, that's yours, you're your back match.
Yeah, that's correct, he's back. So, um, questions?
Right, questions?
Are there currently apartments in use in there right now?
No, it has been vacant for, the, the apartments have been vacant. The commercial space has had a revolvent door of, um, commercial uses, but no apartments have any.
And what is this, is this grant going to cover the cost to do what needs to be done in and of itself that's really important?
Rista, do you mind? Yeah, so Rista is taking the lead on the grant application, um, just for the board's, um, further information. The Connecticut Community Challenge Grant is the same grant, uh, opportunity that the city pursued with Railroad Square, um, redevelopment. And we were awarded funds, um, earlier in the life and later into. So this is the same grant opportunity, we're just going after this for these purposes and Rista, you want to go?
So right now, this, this building is mixed use, it has eight apartments on the second and third floor. They're very, they're uninhabitable, they're, they're torn apart, there's dog park utilities, it's not been used for over twenty years. The Come Home to Downtown project and then further, um, Denmark has been hired as an architect to develop plans. They have split those eight units up into sixteen studio-type apartments. And then there'll be one apartment on the ground floor that will be ADA accessible. Um, and so the funding. The project, um, is being funded by the developer, um, by the property owner himself, uh, but he can't fund the entire project. There's a gap in funding that doesn't qualify for traditional bank loans, so this grant will help close that gap. So this project can get done all at one time in one phase and be put back to productive use.
Why, why doesn't it, why does it not qualify for the traditional bank?
Because old buildings cost a lot to renovate, um, especially when you want to preserve the historic character of a building. And so when you invest that kind of money, your ROIs with the revenues that you could expect, they come out, you know, as a, as a negative. And banks won't fund that, but the investor does have significant, uh, investment into this property. He's investing over sixty percent of the project, um, of the, or the amount will be sixty percent of the project coming solely from the developer. And then the, the remaining funds will be the bank funds.
I mean, I, I don't think it'd be difficult, I'm, I'm glad we're doing this, that we're doing this, I, um, I just feel the responsibility as an elected official that this million four is the ultimate taxpayer money, correct? Is that correct?
From the state, there's many challenges from, yeah, the state.
With many tax barriers.
The state, well, well, yeah, I mean, it's all, it's all, any kind of government's money is, yeah, of course, it's.
That's why I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's the government's money that came through.
We, yeah, so we're, again, so just to be clear, we're using taxpayers' money to assist in the, what will be a federally owned apartment building. And I think we have a responsibility to ask what's, what justifies spending with taxpayers' money, everybody here, everybody pointing to that particular building. What justifies us giving that particular building the money, um, what does the city get in return for this? I think I know the idea, but I would like to make it public, I would like to.
Sure, so I mean, the biggest thing is right now the property's valued at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. We expect that this value will go up to over a hun- five hundred thousand dollars, so there'll be an increase in tax revenue. Uh, but it will also help meet some of our housing demands. All of the, um, apartments that are downtown are a hundred percent occupied and there's a waiting list for them. And these are studio, one-bedroom type apartments. We know that there's a demand, we know there's more people that want to live downtown. Um, artists from the launch pad are looking for places that they can't find, so this will provide vibrancy downtown.
Does this, now what type of housing, what will this be, affordable housing or market value?
So five of the units will be at market rate, I did bring, um, a form, but they'll be dated at eighty percent of the area median income. Which means their rents will be around fifteen hundred dollars a month at max.
That's five of the one we're down.
Five of the seventeen.
And the other ones will be?
All market rate.
All market rate, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I never really got that this building also in its current condition, it is vacant, um, there has been a fair amount of, um, vacancy. Uh, you know, it's accessible, um, to, um, homeless people or people that have been able to access, you know, they scale the back porches. And gain entry into the building. This is a way for us to make sure that that type of activity is, is curtailed. Um, and as Rista said, you know, when the whole Come Home to Downtown, the whole goal was to establish these vibrant downtowns. You know, growing up here in the city of Torrington, those apartments were rented out, people lived in those apartments.
No, I, I get that, right, and I get that.
So bringing those back.
That's totally valid, I support it a hundred percent completely. I just think we need as a, as a city council, we need to be crystal clear about how we are spending taxpayers' money on one particular, which will be individually owned apartment. When there will be no doubt, numerous other apartment owners in Torrington will wonder why and may not qualify for a grant. Uh, similar kinds of grants to suspend on a third one, and we need to be prepared to answer that intelligently and thoroughly.
And I think I just will just add, you know, this building is one of the oldest buildings in Torrington, I was part of the original Willy Lock. And there's been some renovations in, what, the early fifties, uh, to bring some upgraded utilities, but a lot of it is original. So, um, Mr. Capelletti is looking to restore the historic character of the building, that facade will keep as much of the interior historic as possible, library and. But, but what's been happening, because there hasn't been funding available for this building, it's really become blighted and, and deteriorating condition. And this is in the, right in the gateway of the community, as you come in from the south, this is the first building you see. We hear complaints all the time about the, the blatant porches, about the color, you know, kind of the deteriorating facade and, and it's not really the property or fault per se. But it takes a lot of money, if you can't get the bank financing to fix it, it's, it just doesn't work. And so, uh, Mr. Capelletti has lost the property and, you know, invested a significant amount of money and in order to, uh, make it what really the city deserves. As the vibrant building restored its historic character, grant funds are needed.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more question. Um, of the seventeen apartments, are they all street apartments?
There will be a studio, one bedroom, or just a student?
Uh, no, it's about the five, five bedrooms.
Okay, question, I'm just excited about it and I, I appreciate everything that, um, councilman's, um, comments, you know, it is a state grant, the fact that we're making, we're competitive. It's a very competitive grant, I'm always excited that you, you know, put yourself out there early to, uh, and I know you're regarded in terms of your grant applications by the state, so. Um, you can have my full support, and I love that people are investing in Torrington to bring downtown.
Other questions or comments on the motion? Thank you, Mr. Move all this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Item nine. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, uh, again, a recommendation of the ARPA committee to include the following grant application requests. Uh, these are, I'll do that as a whole, I don't think we need to do that for each grant application, uh, unless any of the council members wish to pull one in particular. But, uh, item A is a grant, um, awarded to thirty-four Wilson Avenue in a sum of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. To fifty-nine Burger Street, a grant in a sum of eight thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. At one ninety-two Main Street, this is the Detroit Historical Society, a grant in a sum of twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Fifteen Water Street, this is the five points annex, exterior painting, nine hundred and ten dollars. To fourteen East Elm Street, um, this is an upgrade for energy efficient HVAC system, ten thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. And forty-eight Main Street, Sasso's whole fire heat zone, this is for space expansion, adding eighteen bathrooms, windows, indoor renovations, in the sum of twenty-five thousand. Um, and there is more to it, so, and so, and then, and then, and then, and other questions on the motion?
Just so people know, this is ARPA money that was dedicated, uh, um, probably won't happen again, uh, in terms of, all this COVID money is going away, which is good. And the fact that, uh, many of the businesses have paid the damage, uh, applying for it, um, there are Marines here from the ARPA review committee as well as a resident who chairs it, but supporting this.
Other questions or comments? I'll call the motion to approve item A through F, all in favor? Any votes?
Aye.
Any extensions? We're going to item ten, I'll do the same thing as a block, a recommendation of the ARPA committee, uh, to conditionally approve the following grant application request. This is pending a second quote before the final grant amount is approved. Um, and just again, by way of background, uh, why these grant applications are submitted, the requested to have two quotes. Um, what we had been finding in the last round and again this round, uh, is that contractors are so busy that people are not able to get a second quote. So, um, these are pending, I think the, um, property owners want to be a little forward on these. Um, and they're still waiting for those second quotes, but I'll do the same thing, ten A is at one-four Main Street. Uh, for repair of the facade and install heating and AC system, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. At twenty-two eight Water Street, uh, percentage and window display, one thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars. Five fifteen Main Street is, um, new siding and window replacement, ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Twenty-five Main Street, uh, to install the fire alarm system on all floors, eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Four oh five Midgen Avenue, uh, facade and new signage, twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. And eleven Main Street, um, for facade and rear, um, it says rear repairs, I'm assuming that's the decks or the stairs. Twenty-five thousand. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, second by Councilwoman Caminaro. And there are questions?
I have one comment.
Yes.
I would like to congratulate, I would like to thank the committee for approving one on twenty-five Main Street, Mr. Nolte's building, getting the, um.
This is actually the third grant the city's given him.
Yeah, I know, and I'm.
We keep giving him money.
I, I think maybe phone calls will be reduced on this basis, so thank you.
Yeah. Help me get that second quote, please. All right, other comments or questions? Karen, I'll have the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion, Karen? All right, I don't have a, uh, same thing, I'll take this in, um, one. Motion, uh, recommendation the ARPA committee to deny the following grant application requests, um, because these are not eligible expenses. Uh, ten, Alexugri eleven A, one eighteen Midgen Avenue, uh, for the installation of a parking lot. Forty Main Street, uh, for roof replacement and four thirty-five Main Street, um, to remove existing roofing material. Install some sheathing and roofing shingles. I'm wishing me that Councilwoman Rowett, one second.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ingea. Other questions?
Yeah, I do, sorry.
Yes.
One more time, just, um, because I don't know it will be asked, um, the reason that the Carol, that the Allen and Associates is not qualified for the roof replacement is what? Especially for Rista.
So in the grant description, we have eligible and ineligible, uh, projects. And roof work is not eligible unless it's connected to the facade in some way, uh, but it needs to be visible from the road. And so, um, this one particular building, the commission actually had quite a good discussion on it because it is a stone building. We did want to look at the move, um, but in fairness, we had a look at all them together and the roof's maintenance is was not eligible expense across the board. I do think that they did some also some other community impact grants, we may have a second chance to look at this and find other different opportunity. But with the facade grant, roof maintenance was wasn't eligible and we didn't want to be inconsistent and approve one and not others.
I, I just wanted to be asked, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this motion? And again, this is to deny east three. All right, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Motion, please. Uh, you know, I, I'm gonna take this as a second, um, bite of a button. Because it's a slightly different, this is to deny without prejudice, the application for one eighty-seven South Main Street. Uh, again, this was roof upgrades, um, and, uh, as you already heard, Rista described what qualifies in this grant. Um, plus I believe the awards now have pretty much, um, extinguished the grants that are available this month. Um, thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, second, thank you, Councilwoman Ingea. Or, did you give it a?
Dude, as long as you have that message for me.
Yeah.
I don't know, this particular building, that was the, that was the original ALPA contact, right?
Your case, yeah. Yeah.
Then what is the status, what is the condition of that building inside this?
So the, the building is being used as storage. The building is being used as storage.
Yeah.
Um, we did grant the first, with the first or second round of facade money, we did grant replacement of. Uh we did grant the first, with the first or second round of facade money, we did grant replacement of windows.
Yeah, I'm just asking the structural integrity of the building.
It's, I think it's structurally, yeah, I think it's very structurally sound. This one was a little bit different than the other roof repairs because they're changing the roof itself. They're making a different roof style, which will be visible and is connected with all different with this facade improvement. So this was a little bit different. Um but what happened was we received the first round of grants and then we decided to keep the grant round open because we had some additional funding. I think this is the last application to come in and there was no funding left. So this was, and this is why this one's not, not eligible expense, because the roof work was very different. It really did impact the facade and changed the shape of the roof. But there was just not funding available. Um the course of this came in.
Okay, are there any active plans for for?
I don't have any in my office.
The building? No?
Yeah, I know Mr. Royals has been in and spoken with, Rista's spoken with me, but there is nothing.
Lovely, thank you, okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries. Item twelve, I'll adjutant motion, recommendation, Small Cities Committee for authorized project approval to sand down construction in Lord Haven. Uh and CPI home improvement of Maryland, Connecticut in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars for light paint mitigation, vinyl siding and roofing at thirty-one Water Street.
So.
Thank you, councilman, you have a name?
Seven.
Second by councilman, one. Um questions or comments on the motion?
Uh yeah, the Small Cities Committee met for the meeting and discussed this project. This was a project that was previously approved by council. Um but uh due to uh imposed maximum funding limits, uh the original project was too high, so it had to be cut back. So uh it still qualifies for uh some very good things, uh siding, roofing, lighting, with mitigation. So uh that's where we're at, so it's just been cut down from the original.
Thank you, councilman. Other questions to the, comments? Hearing them, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries. Item thirteen, I want to do a motion, recommendation of the Emerald Superintendent Streets and Parks and Purchasing Agent to authorize an act and handle the city to award, execute and administer a contract agreement for gravel crushing to equipment leasing corp of New York, Connecticut in the estimated sum of twenty-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Funding of this project is through the Drainage Improvement Council as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Thank you, councilman, I need you.
Seven.
In a second, councilman, one. And um I see Mr. Cody is here, so if you have questions, he can answer. Hearing no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, sorry. Um item fourteen, um I'll adjutant motion. Another recommendation of the facility manager and the purchasing agent to extend the current bid contract to supply cleaning services. For the Army Building and the Teen Center for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four at the same prices and terms as the current contract to Bortia Housekeeping LLC of Torington as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
I hear, councilman, I need you, second by councilman, I need you. One motion. Um questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, I'll adjutant motion by the City Council, acting here as a one pollution control authority to approve our request of the WPCA Administrator EORIC to state contract number one four PSX zero three three zero to purchase one new Caterpillar A model nine L six dash one four A wheel loader with all standard equipment from HO and Edmonton, Connecticut. The cost applied of a hundred and eleven thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars. Um reduced by fifteen thousand dollars by trade and option. Uh with a net cost of ninety-six thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars. This unit will be replacing the twenty-three year old wheel loader being used at the WPCA and would need a major transmission repair of ten thousand dollars. Um to clarify that last sentence, this is replacing the twenty-three year old uh loader that is currently in need of major transmission repairs. So I'm hoping, thank you, councilwoman, wait. Second, I think councilman, I need you. Are there um questions or comments? Saying Mr. Towsley is here. He answered.
Just to do what you're already, this last one.
Yes.
Yes, what's that? Is my answer already? Yes.
Any other questions? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Question carries.
Aye.
Item sixteen, I'll adjutant motion to again, by the City Council, acting here as one issue control authority to approve a payment from five four ninety sanitary sewer capital improvement uh to rent here to the sum of five thousand hundred thirty dollars and forty-two cents. This is for the Brentwood Avenue sewer replacement. Oh, can you just question one more?
Seven.
Second by councilman, one. Um question on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item seventeen.
Aye.
Adjutant motion to offer as a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award and execute a one-year extension of the contract agreement with Permian Labs in Torsten, Connecticut in the amount of seventy thousand dollars for the local flood protection project routine maintenance. This project is funded through the landfill post closure activities and not with a regular lead uh revenue accounts. Uh as further explained in the city engineer's memo dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Thank you, councilwoman. Sorry, second by councilman, I need you. Uh questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item eighteen, I'll adjutant motion to authorize the use of ARPA funds for phase one of the Torington Armory LED lighting upgrade which will include the purchase of lighting materials from Brandon City Electric and Perfect, Connecticut. And installation by city contracted electrician first line services department, Connecticut. Uh at an estimated cost of nine thousand dollars as further explained in our facility manager's memo dated April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Thank you, councilman, one. Okay, and second by councilman, you have a name? Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item nineteen, I'll adjutant motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and offer its tax refunds intended unless dated April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Second, second by councilman, one. Questions on the motion, I have a list. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Item twenty, I'll adjutant motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and offer its tax refunds intended unless dated April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So.
Thank you, councilwoman, one.
So.
Second by councilman, I need you. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item twenty-one, I'll adjutant motion to consider business by the firm aheads.
So. Seven.
Councilman, you two, councilman, um, call. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so. Everyone move to firm aheads. Um starting with Mr. Towsley, anything to ask?
Nothing to leave, I think.
Thank you. Uh Emile Castro, anything about the maintenance?
Nothing to add, thank you very much.
Um to Cody, you've done a great job for us, town hall.
You know, I have nothing to add, just to thank my crews for cleaning up. Doing a great job on the twenty-one first.
We did, appreciate it. All right, uh Jenny, sorry.
Just an update um on the already approved energy project for the whole city. We are like seventy percent complete with that, so we are finishing up at the lease apartment. And what's left is the remainder of the streetlights. So far, I'm pretty good. Uh all the boilers now with the P E. Your lighting, you're lighting in the fire department, while the works garage and they're working on the streetlights. So just wanted to give you an update, it's moving right along. We should be finished by the end of May.
Thank you, Jen. Questions? Since it took your time to run a point. Uh let's see, we have, I think, Ray True left to go, right? Was that's right. Um I know that Chief Bourne is still here, and he's been sitting here. Is that the chief?
Well, yeah, thank you.
Uh Dick Michelle, I agree with um wanting anything from Publicity Council, does he?
Uh nothing, your mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Um City Park Office, anything? Right, how about something? Uh then let me move into um item twenty-two, I'll adjutant motion to consider business by the members. So, thank you, her, so, woman, um, wait, and second by councilman, you have a name? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'll start from my left, councilman, welcome.
Wow, um, mayor, may maybe would it be possible to get um this information is out there and I'm just wondering if we're basically at the end of the ARPA process, right, the whole thing? It'd be really interesting to me, maybe, maybe, maybe only um if we saw a whole breakout, a whole movement, just men and and categorizing them. I think it would provide a really interesting profile, snapshot of the city. And it may be useful to a lot of people in the city when looking for brands, you know, and really seeing, I mean, I think you can tell a lot about our city, our problems and our needs and how we are stacking up against others to be across Connecticut by just looking at how those money specifically were spent by categories. I think you could do a lot of interesting metric work with that. Is that possible, do they?
Absolutely, yes. Um I would say that we're not, I would say we're a lot halfway through our spending plan. That was approved by this board.
Yeah.
Um at the next meeting, you'll see some more um funds that are um being put to um use.
Yeah.
Uh in helping to remediate some uh some unhealthy housing concerns. Uh this was the grant fund that we established through the uh Toronton area health district.
Yeah.
Um so it's a, I appreciate your request. I think it's a great opportunity for us to bribe a little bit about the good work that we've been able to do through these funds.
Number one, number two, to Rista. I'm 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 throwing you bone here. Um this may be of some use going forward in you making your case to the state about, you know, the designation of Florida as a micro peloton and and how that actually straps us in in so many ways. I think this information could be really useful if you, again, because you've got a real apples to apples set of metrics here, you know, across the state of Connecticut, this this could be um uh very useful.
I think there's one piece of the ARPA funding that we haven't quite put to work for us that I think will really um cement what you're trying to um, what you're trying to point out there. Um and that's our um social service um agents study that we want to do, you know? What's the impact to an urban center? Micro publican center. Um and we haven't gotten uh into that yet, and I've heard back and forth a number of times, you know, is that an academic study? Is that you know, is there somebody out there that can help us really wrap our heads around uh what the real cost of uh you know, these services are to a people like Torington? So yeah, a great opportunity for us to um to do that dialogue at this level, I think, is important.
And because because this is state and federal then this group break much like Ojai, right, where where the standards were were still standardized in a way. I think that's a real usable data that could get enough help and make our case that, you know, we should get more funding based on these verifiable needs as well. Thank you, mayor.
Yeah, great points. Thank you. Uh councilman, you have a name?
So um three issues, one in in response to the ARPA, the next round for the community grants is um coming up, so the ARPA review will be meeting soon. I will get Rista um within the next few weeks.
Yeah, we're um the the community foundation is just reviewing the applications and summarizing that for us.
Yeah.
And once that new portal opens, we'll get the information and.
But I think this is, you know, an opportunity to also say that the process that Torington, the city of Torington is using to distribute these funds has been so different than other municipalities and a real compliment to to Rista and the mayor who are sort of proposing this and are working with our community foundation through the MOU and having their expertise and really reviewing these grant applications. I don't think we're too dear or horned enough um that, you know, the working and the mayor. There's a lot of good things that are happening here.
I'm looking forward to do that. I don't, I don't know I don't know what that is that you're describing now, but I would love to hear more from you, you mean. Um you're describing, yeah, the differences, we'll look to you.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, just revisiting the process, going back to you know, what was presented to the council, what the council approved and based on the council's approval, what that public process was. So, you know, we can talk about, you know, the hard work that Rista has put in um herding cats and getting these things moved and how many um hours and hours that we sit in my office to talk about what those next steps are, but um it really does all stem from what this council decided it wanted to prioritize. So um those, uh that comes right back to this point as well.
And I think using, you know, the MO, MOU with community foundation, their process has been less intimidating in terms of the application process for a Torington youth, you know, service or.
As opposed to other cities, you see. See, I don't know that, I don't know where.
Right, well, I think, yes, and I think that'll be a good um presentation that Rista can give at some point, but it's just less intimidating than most applications and also we're spreading it out a little bit more than than these I've read in terms of distribution of funds to the ARPA.
The other one is, you know, I had talked to the mayor about tailoring the um solid waste uh ordinance for the meeting. Knowing that we were going to get some response, knowing we still need to do some work um in terms of communicating with our businesses. So I encourage anyone that's out there to play on the shopping carts. Um I know I'm a frequent flyer to TJ X, unfortunately. Um but, you know, meeting, you know, I actually met with the manager just to say, this is happening. Want you to be aware of it, go on the website to learn about it. So I agree with some of the comments that are made that we still need to really engage our community more in, you know, trying to get their input on this, because this is a significant change. The ordinance committee has been working on this since August, you know, of last year and probably before that, in a conversation, but and it has gone through several different edits. Um and also, particularly the shopping carts, it's brought up by constituent, what's added to the solid waste, it's sort of making sense with what we're addressing in terms of um litter and dumping and everything else, so. Um please, you know, spread the word as much as you can. We know Ray is in here, but his department has actually been working to, you know, get that word out. The other, the ordinance committee is working on is to fear rent commission. Um you should have all been sent the revisions of the ordinance. Uh as you know, we're required to do it before July first. Um so there are edits that were made from our last ordinance meeting and we have the next ordinance meeting May first. Um we'll probably have as a single item, again, the, you know, with fear rent um commission that the city must create. So please, again, I'll solicit input, not like, um, public, um, fellow council members to really give your input, because this is something we have to statute, letting statute, um, having this July first. Thank you, councilman, I need you.
Uh nothing at this time, sir.
Councilman, I don't know.
I just would like to ask councilman, anyway, a little bit more about the ordinance. Use my time for that. Shopping carts. Uh and I, to that point, you know, when I looked at the first draft of it a few weeks back, it was kind of easy for me to follow because of those red lines and I had a number of constituents come to me with concerns about the ordinance for tonight and I, you know, when I looked at it, I said, I don't think this is new. Like, because it was stuff that was redlined a few weeks ago. I was assuming it was the original ordinance. As a matter of process, when we do, if we're going to vote on this again, is there a way to have it for the public be redlined for what the ultimate ordinance is? Is that, I mean, I know we talked about before another ordinance where there seems to be a lot of red, but here it seemed to be like, it made it really clear for me to read the first draft of it, so then when I got the second draft that we were voting on tonight, if there is no red line, I really had to match it up and the public might not even have the original version. the public might not even have the original version.
Well, actually, no, this was never in the original ordinance, um, for solid waste stuff.
The red line, the stuff about the shopping carts, it's.
Last edit of the stuff, so, yeah, we can get past these of them.
Well, just because much of the nineteen pages is not legal, right?
Well, compared to the old ordinance, which was passed, um, potentially in your pack at two thousand and ten, um, this, you know, this iteration is so different, and so hard to compare, but two thousand and ten to two thousand twenty-three, uh, even with the definitions, all the definitions are now placed.
I thought you had to go back and see how many, maybe there were more changes than I even thought last.
Yeah, it really is.
So, I mean, I think we need to do some more work on the, I got some comments as well about the shopping cart, the notification.
So, who can actually, who they call, um, in terms of any violation of this ordinance, um. Another, came up with these shopping carts in front of some of the properties in downtown Torington, and, um, just leave them on the sidewalk, um, where does that come in? So, I'm, I'm certainly open to any comments, um.
Did anybody have ideas from other cities like ours about how carts were, I mean, is this that out of the ordinance, is that similar to how other cities have? I believe it did seem humorous, particularly to downtown business owners, or sort of maybe, you know, pillars and things, but.
So, because I think downtown, you're seeing them mostly Walmart and fresh shoppers, they're sort of continued with the parking lot, um, but certainly. I know that, I'm so sorry, Ray has left, but, um, I know that he tried to look at other ordinances, um, with other municipalities, but I'm happy to answer that question. Yeah, I would just, yes, you know, when we look at, uh, through CCM, we do a search for other municipalities, and what do their ordinances look like? And honestly, for the most part, they were saying, no, we're waiting for Torington to do something, so we keep looking at what Torington does. Um, I, I agree, the, the shopping carts in the core downtown area are a bigger issue, because it's, uh, people that are walking to the shopping cart. They're walking to the grocery stores, they're walking to TJ Maxx, you know, and those are the carts that we're finding at, at one, uh, one, uh, trucking owner on the corner of lighting and prospect. That calls almost every day to say, could you come and pick up this shopping cart? There's another one here today. I, they got three over one weekend, you know, so these are a serious problem, um, not an easy solution, um.
I know, I just hate that they're on the first. Companies to go turn out or take them.
And actually, many of the companies, you know, already have those locking systems and things, um, but it's still, you know, I don't think they're working very well.
Well, I mean, the corner feels like it wouldn't, but, I mean, the locking mechanism, I know in cities they have, and then those cars are, they used to, twenty years ago, they were seven hundred fifty dollars each, I'm sure, and I love with that now, so you would think companies would go looking for them, but, um, they always have manpower to do that, so.
Right, and it is an expense of the company, and I think, you know, that was one of the reasons why I was trying to solicit, you know, as much as you can, um. You know, with corporations like a TJ Maxx, you talk to a manager on Shet, you know, which, um, is different than talking to the manager of this, you know, overseeing it, or whoever owns the, um, franchise, but it's, it is, it does have to get almost like a business. I know that one of the comments that were made about the, um, ones on the street, kind of certain rental properties, you know, should it be the responsibility of the owner of that property? Um, so that has come up as a question too, and I can't answer it, other than you can't have litter on the street on the sidewalks, but you know, you can't fix some certain, you said that, I think this is certainly an attempt, we have nothing before to have something to address it, um. I didn't want to say what I really want to say, sometimes you just find common sense, or even in parking lots, you see shopping carts where people just all you need to do is walk like fifteen steps to put them in the, in the area that they're to be housed, but, um. So, any other comments, please, um, we'd love to, that actually, on May first, besides the fair housing, um, commission will probably has, we will now as a second agenda for solid waste ordinance. Yep, definitely. And, um, Councilman Minnichia, I think I heard the request is a red line version.
Well, I know what, we're, we're a month prior, I think that was a little bit.
Just continue to do it.
So I was just trying to make sure that the version that didn't show any red lines that we had for tonight's meeting is not different than the one of the struggle, and, and, in which case, than the red line version, I just felt like was much clearer, because I was able to say, well, really, we're not really talking about fees and, we're really talking about shopping carts, and that bulk of changes to this ordinance.
Oh, God, no, um, there's so many sections in this ordinance.
Okay, then I have.
Yeah, there, there, yeah, there's, there's a lot of parts.
If this was at one point fifty pages, um, because there were so many different changes that used to be, I mean, the original ordinance from twenty-ten, that's why we're always hoping for more participation from the public, because it's not just about shopping carts, it is certainly about how we recycle. Um, salvaging was another issue.
Yes.
You know, which, you know, at one point, they said, no, no, um, salvaging is permitted. Well, how many times do you put something out for bulk waste pickup? And, you know, you want people to pick it up, I want people to come and take it away, recycle it to their own homes, um, whoever it might be, so that was added and changed, um, so there are so many, the shopping cart was actually one of the last things that was put into the ordinance. I mean, I think there are, I know this.
No, that's okay, I'll go back to the original, see, I know it's not that it needs to.
And redlining is something that, even if it's a work in progress, you know, your first version is, you know, it's in red, all those changes are in red. You know, second edits, you know, appearing, you know, you can track those with color coding.
And, and, if that's not simple, but, and, and then going back to Mr., I think Mr. Kedever had asked for a request to have bullet points at the front of, um.
Where to look for those moves in Torington.
Yeah. If, if I'm the city councilwoman, and I'm sitting there, hearing them all, and usually I miss things, well then, always helps with people running out.
And actually, I think Ray did at one point do a, sort of a highlights, um, which, you know, maybe do it again, he could bring up that, or they either can distribute it, but there was some highlights of what was going to be changed in the ordinance, so. Um, you know, we're working on it, and, and think that we have, right, to be honest with you. It's, um, certainly amiable to any of the public comments, because all those members are working on this, so.
Thank you. Councilman Minnichia.
The only thing I was gonna, I got ahead of the end, plus if the, the red line stuff is great, but the average taxpayer doesn't have time to go through it all, or, or maybe not the ability to go through it the right way. If there's a highlight sheet with bullet points or a list of major changes, and where to find it, how to index one page, then they could.
Yeah.
They might only be interested in one or two things, that's it, wow.
And that's, that's to defend, um, to redline, the redline got so confusing that we had said, you know, that this ordinance and solid waste has changed so much that we need to, this is what we're going to be having as a new ordinance, um. And, uh, people pay attention to it, because, you know, we didn't even talk about fees, and how they would be determined, so, um. We got more work to do, so. I think the only thing that I would also add to that is, um, I know that there's uh, somewhere in the conversation I heard, you know, the state continues to make changes. I don't think that there should be a delay on our part to adapt an ordinance, waiting for the state to make changes, because uh, for eight years, I have been a part of those committees, you know, through the, uh, it'll be another fifteen years before D finally decides what it's really going to do with, you know, EPPR, and, you know, and solid waste and store separation, and, you know, and glass and plastic and styrofoam. Um, I, I don't think that we need to wait for the state to make any decisions, I do believe that the city does make some decisions. But I absolutely, um, agree that the decisions have to be, um, public enough, so the public, they represent what the public really wants to see happen. And I will, I think, to, um, to your request, in terms of, uh, more revision, we'll pull up that, you know, those highlights, and redistribute, maybe. You know, I just don't want to confuse, you know, the public to say, well, these are the highlights, but really, the ordinance is, is, you know, the language that, you know, we're going to be casting.
Okay. I think Councilman Minnichia.
I'm all set, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Appreciate that. I, I'm going to move into item number twenty-three, I'll entertain a motion to go from the meeting to the public to comment on the agenda items for me.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minnichia. Uh, second by Councilman Kavanero, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, uh, and she's already in.
I'm already here, Sharon Reigner, one seven eight, so. First of all, I really appreciate all your discussion tonight, and I didn't mean, knowing through you this ordinance, every time the change, state changes something, but there might be some kind of connoisseur in there saying that, you know, there will be future changes and the city will be complying with that. Also, um, Tom Kedever, and Lorraine and I, and Judy Dillard, and George Craig are on recycling committee, and we've been talking with Ray, we're going to have four meetings, we're going to be working on this with you, because we really all feel it's very important that we do this and we get the word out to people. Um, Ray had so good a cheat, I think if we have that up to the public, and like I said in other newsletters or other information, senior center, it helps those people who are technology challenged. I'm becoming that way lately, because things keep changing. But, um, I think we, as a committee, are going to do everything we can, working with Ray, with Linda, to try to help this go forward and build on our education process, so thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Edward Potter with the Lake Ridge. Um, chapter twenty, one twenty-eight applies to municipal waste only. I'm concerned about all the organic waste generated by all supermarkets in town. Uh, I think that's probably more, more organic waste is coming out of these markets than out of people's homes. Are there any plans to deal with that, to try to get the markets to do something about their organic waste? I don't know what they're all doing, I know in one market, I asked the person in the fruit and vegetable department, who was separating out the undesirable fruit and vegetables, and I asked him, what happens if at least that just goes in coverage? So I think that's an important thing to focus on. And just one comment about the shopping carts. I think most store owners look to lie to get their shopping carts back. I don't think that any of them want people taking their shopping carts back. So I think who pulls charge, requiring them to spend money, uh, to save, protect their carts is probably maybe not the most productive way to do it. It's just an, an expense, and I'm not sure if the technologies are all that perfect, whether it makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question to address on the agenda items?
I'd like to address, um, uh, Mr. Potter's, uh, questionnaire. I look at all the, uh, environmental, environmental committee, uh, hearings and the, uh, bills that are up for consideration, there is one about, uh, food waste, and, uh, there's a certain part of that that talks about trying to get more, uh, usable food into hands of the people that need it before it becomes, uh, ready for, uh, the compost pile. And, and there's also the other part of it, you know, wanting to, uh, get, uh, the, these, uh, bigger institutions, like Ed was talking about, the, uh, your, your shopping, the shopping things, even, even other, uh, other, uh, or, or like a manufacturer, food manufacturers, they have, uh, ways to get it to, say, some, one of these, uh, uh, facilities like the anaerobic digesters, get it over there and, and, and process it, so, so I think there's, uh, there's a lot of, uh, things going on, you know, as, as the, you know, mayor has mentioned, uh, there's so many, uh, so many different bills, I, I looked at the same things, you know, they want to, uh, ban, uh, styrofoam in, in schools, and there's a whole thing about, you know, we, we missed out on getting the, uh, pilot program for food scraps, now there's a whole new thing, now they're going to try pilot programs for schools and food scraps, you know, so, you know, who knows where it's going to go, but, uh, but I like to also mention, one of the thing, one of the thing that Stop and Shop is doing, uh, they, uh, they have this, uh, I'm not sure what the name of it, I think it's fresh food or something like that, it, it, it's, they're, they're just starting it, uh, in certain areas, uh, I think they've got, you know, well over, I think well over a hundred fifty stores in Connecticut, uh, and, and, you know, plus other states. They were going to have some way of, uh, some app where you could, uh, people could find out about, uh, produce, you know, things that they, uh, uh, maybe, uh, that they'd be, they'd be selling it up to half off, you know, some app that you can go on and, and find this food, and, you know, before it gets, uh, just tossed out, you know? So, uh, but they, they, from what I checked, the, they're starting at first in the, uh, in Connecticut, say, between the stores between New Haven and Greenwich. That's true, which is, uh, you know, is a big area, but, uh, you know, you could, uh, you know, there's promising things going on, so, thank you.
Kedever. Anybody else on the left? No further business for the board, um, I'll entertain a motion for Jen.
So.
Councilman Minnichia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes for Jen? Thank you.